Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on September the 24th, 2024, 10:00 AM in Commissioners' courtroom, County Administration Building 2 of South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is invocation of pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag and Commissioner Watson will lead this.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we humbly bow before your presence. Grant us the wisdom to discern, the humility to accept, the strength to follow the path that you've set before us. We seek your guidance, Lord, as we embark on this meeting. May your light shine upon our discussions and may our decisions align with your divine will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one nation indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item is call for citizens' input and/or concerns.
Judge, if I could have just a minute.
Okay, sure.
So, I don't know if you all are aware, most of you probably are, but the Novus Agenda software system apparently crashed sometime this weekend. It is not a Brazos County problem, it's a Novus Agenda problem. We've been told they are working on it. Our notices were posted with county clerk as required, the agenda notices. They have been posted now on the front page of the Brazos County website under headlines, and until Novus gets their problems worked out or we change plans, they will continue to be posted on the front page of the Brazos County website under headlines.
Okay, thank, thank, count. All right. Mary Mize.
Good morning, and thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Mary Mize. I live on Mize Road, which is a little bit of a road out east of here, and I came with some pleas from y'all that I'm 85 years old. I've lived on Mize Road for 66 years of those, and I love living, living there, but it's rather become a dusty problem right now. I was here two years ago. Some of you may remember me being here. I said, please help me, and there was no detour. I'll get to that later. But I just said, I can't stand the dust anymore. My house, which is on Mize Road, is 52 feet from Mize Road. And so now what we have is a situation that is necessary. I understand that. Sorry, I brought visuals. I'm an ex-teacher, and I found out that visuals work very well. Here is where I live. This is FM 1179, which leads from Bryan to Curtain. Here is my road. Excuse me, I call it my road. It's really not. It curves right here all the way to Grasbur Road. It's a little tiny bit of a road, a half a mile long. It's all dirt. And they have made it a detour, which is very understandable, because they've got some bridges on Grasbur, and these bridges have become damaged. There's something about the supports underneath it. So they're needing to close Grasbur and reroute that traffic this way, so if you're going into town, or you're going to Curtain, or wherever, you're going to come down Mize Road. It's not fun, believe me. Okay. These are the houses and whatever down my road. They're much smarter than me, most of them. Like I said, my house is 52 feet from the road. And so is the little rent house that I own next to it. But the rest of them down the road, they're way back off the road. They have trees and everything to catch the dust, but not me. So I'm asking you today, if there's anything that can be done. I know the county has tried their very best, I think, to help me with that road. They're not going to pave it, because the road is only a two-lane road. So cars go by and they go like this. And some go very slowly, and then some just race by. So they prepared the road as best they could, but as you know, we need a rain. It's dry. It's dusty. I love this. When I walk out in my yard, or work out in my yard, I put this on. And when I come back in the house, it's dusty, very dusty. Like I say, there's a detour sign there, and the detour is, detour road is Mize Road. I want to live in my house for another 10 years at least, maybe longer. And I'd like something, I know there's something that can be done, because I've counted as many as 80 vehicles a day going up and, up and down my road. And it's not just during the daytime. They come by at night, too. So, school buses, 18-wheelers, I don't know how they do that on a two-lane road, trucks pulling horse trailers, UPS trucks, and just regular cars.
Ms. Mize?
Have I used it up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I'm here asking, is there anything y'all can do to help me? I would appreciate it. A big change is coming with 1179, and I'm all for that. We're growing, people. We are growing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mize.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name's Thomas Kavaness. I am the Democratic County Chair here in Brazos County. I was watching the Commissioners' Court meeting from last week, and I am here to set the record straight on many items. Firstly, our elections in Brazos County are without a doubt clear and transparent. There's no major issues with voter fraud, and the folks that come up continuously and raise questions, I'll say, about voter fraud should start looking at their own party. The only case of anyone voting twice or anything like that that I'm aware of in Brazos County history occurred in the Republican primary runoff this year, where a Republican voter voted by mail, came in to vote in person after, like four or five days later, I could be wrong on the time, received a provisional ballot, and the Republican election judge should have thrown out and not accepted that provisional ballot. However, the Republican election judge accepted both ballots then, allowing this person to vote twice in the Republican primary. This is not a problem with undocumented people who are referred to by this group as more derogatory terms. I was at the election equipment test a couple of weeks ago on the night of the presidential debate as a part of it and as a representative of the Democratic Party, and people were complaining that folks were being, quote, "yelled at" for touching the equipment. The folks who were there were observers. They were asked to stay in one area where they could see everything. They went beyond where they were asked to stay. If you're an observer, you're to observe. Something that should have taken maybe 45 minutes took two and a half, three hours, because there were constant questions, the same ones over and over, the same ones that they bring up at County Commissioners' Court every week about these devices being connected to the Internet. Our devices are not connected to the Internet. They cannot be. And I think that Trudy and Crystal and the rest of the Brazos County staff acted with the utmost respect, considering the circumstance. The person who was complaining that somebody had been yelled at said, "This man touched the equipment and was yelled at." And then he touched it again, and he was yelled at. Yes, we're trying to protect our elections. We can't have observers just touching our equipment, or the equipment. It's not mine. Another falsehood that I would like to bring up during this that puts my life at risk and my office and my volunteers is someone came up here and lied about Fiesta Patrias, not knowing even what the celebration was, and said that the Democratic group, without naming us, was there with a pinata of Trump, without naming him, and that we were charging people $2 to hit him. That is false, unequivocally false. I'm the Democratic Chair. The Democratic Party did not have a booth at Fiesta Patrias. One of our subsets did, the Texas Democratic Women of the Brazos Valley. They did not have a Trump pinata. They were not charging people $2 to hit a Trump pinata. We take political violence very seriously. We condemn it always. If you look into my, and I don't care which side it's coming from, you can look me up, you can see that I had a, all right, you can see I have a record of holding people accountable for those things, even Democrats, if you look into me. So thank you very much for your consideration, and thank you, staff.
Thank you. Keith King?
Judge, one of the things that was mentioned was the double vote, and just so everybody knows, by statute, we're required to report that to the District Attorney's Office, and that has been reported to the District Attorney's Office for, for them to investigate.
Okay, thank you, count.
Morning. I just wanted to read an article here from the very respected Colonel Allen West, the Dallas County Republican Party Chairman. And last week, the Dallas County Republican Party Executive Committee unanimously passed a resolution supporting the Dallas Hero Initiative. Governments are to be structured based upon constitutions at the federal and state levels, but at the local and municipal level. They have charters. The arrogance of officialdom must be tempered and controlled. What is quite disconcerting has been the reaction of the Dallas City Council toward those seeking accountability to the citizens to abide by the Charter of the City of Dallas or face consequences. But this is not just an issue in the city of Dallas. It is an issue, a bipartisan one, that is a cancer at each level of the government. How interesting that the federal government goes into an apolip meltdown over a government shutdown. Yet it is the government who unilaterally made decisions on who was essential in the private sector. Consider the hypocrisy. Citizens, whose tax revenue enabled the existence of government, have no say-so on the essential duties and functions of government. Yet during COVID, the government could tell businesses that they had to close and offer them a pittance, their own taxpayer funds as a solution. It is the government who tells people in Texas that their property, their homes, are not their own. Regardless of someone doing all the right things and paying off their land and home, they still must pay their rent to the government by way of property taxes. It was French economist Friedrich Bastiat, who in his essay, "The Law," expressed that the government exists to protect the life, liberty, and property of the citizens. He characterized the wealth redistribution schemes of the government as legal plunder. That is what the arrogance of officialdom is all about, creating rules, regulations, and restrictions upon thee, but not for me. As Chairman of the Dallas County Republican Party, I believe it is time that elected officials at every level of government be held accountable to the electorate. They must no longer believe that they can flaunt their arrogance in our face. This cancer has to be confronted, or else our liberties and freedoms will be eroded. Think about the Dallas City Council response, that it cannot afford to hire more police officers and secure their pensions, yet seeks to give themselves a pay raise. If that is not the height of arrogance, then what is? Or even elected officials who ask for electoral support and then power share with the very political opposition you helped them to defeat. Elected officials are public servants, and this is a representative democracy, not a pure democracy. This means that those elected serve the citizens and speak their voice. We can ill afford to descend in with political oligarchy, but we are on that road to perdition. Thank you. Again, that was the Colonel Allen West. And I would just like to add, regarding the budgets, there's a county in Texas, and I don't know if you heard this, but their judge is telling people, if they don't like the higher taxes, move. This is happening in Texas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Page?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Because the system was down over the weekend, and we were unable to access any of the hyperlinks as to what's being voted on today, we'll be able to hear your vote, yea or nay, but we don't have any of the details. It makes it really hard for citizens to participate in the process without the information that's being voted on. So there were a couple of items that, when they come up for a vote, if you could elaborate a little bit, so we have an idea of what they entail. It would be agenda item number seven. Number 13, we're wondering why is the political party not paying for that trip, you know, the winning party, whichever one it is? Why is the political party not paying for it instead of the county? Number 21 is the budget amendments. We have no idea what these amendments are, and the payment of claims. Also, number 26 and 27, question was about whether that, the monthly reports, are they up to date on the system when it comes back? And do you have any idea when it will be available? And if it's not available soon, can we get a hard copy printed from your office to, to tell us what's going to be voted on? And my last point was, I just heard today that there was a meeting of the Board of Elections, so I was wondering if you could tell me if it was announced within whatever the parameters are and where it was published, because I never, I didn't see that published anywhere on the county website. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. And to Thomas, if I was wrong, I apologize, but that's what I was told had occurred. So I will accept responsibility if I'm wrong, but if I'm right, I take the credit. What I wanted to share with you today is there is a court case that was filed August 28th by United Sovereign Americans Incorporated against the state of Texas, basically Secretary of State and our Attorney General. It's a very long case. It's a very intense case. And Brazos is in one of the exhibits for having an example of someone that was found to have been a duplicate registration, and they protected the name. I haven't looked up this person yet. But I wanted to circle back on July 23rd, when I spoke about us having dirty voter rolls. And then our election administrators spoke the following week for 20 minutes on why I might have misunderstood the information. So I went back, and I took 84 records, just 84, and I looked at them, and this is what I found, and this is based on the August 13th, 2024 voter registration roll. I found 17 that were deceased, but yet their status was active. I found two that were deceased. I would consider it a strong match. One was deceased and had voted in 2015. The date of death was 2018. Four had the same name with two VUIDs. One had been deceased in 2017 and had been, or 2007. They were still on suspense. And one son of a deceased person had been on suspense since 2020, which is not that big of a deal. But I wanted to come back and say, what I said was right. Our voter rolls do have people on there that should not be on there, and in particular, people that have died. So that's all I'll say at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
First off, I want to say that at the Fiesta Patrias events, which I was there at, none of that occurred. And maybe before we make statements, we should confirm that before we go publicly, would say anything like that. That's, that's just horrific. Nothing like that happened. I was there, and I wouldn't be part of anything that happened like that. Many of you Commissioners know me, know me. I would never be a part of that. Also, at the Fiesta Patrias, I want to commend, maybe this is not, I wanted to do this at City Council, but I want to commend Officers Alvarez and Officers Poland at the Fiesta, and also Mayor Bobby Gutierrez. There was a lady there who was having a mental health breakdown, and the police officers, Officer Sergeant Alvarez, and I believe it was Sergeant Poland, went in, stepped in, very professionally went in, deescalated the situation. So that was one incident that happened there, and I think those two officers are to be commended how they handled that, 100%. Also, I want to speak Also, I want to speak as far as this, the incendiary, and I guess that's the word, the minion cancerous move to try to discredit all of our voters, the good job that Trudy does, which is an amazing job, she has a difficult job. She's placated, she's tried, she's tried to do everything she can to make sure that everybody is satisfied. But like I told her before personally, you're not going to be able to please everybody. Our voters, our voting here is safe, it is transparent, nobody's, and nobody here is trying to cheat anybody. But to that event, there were, there were over 60 lawsuits filed across six states from Trump and his allies aiming to overturn the 2020 election results. What was the result of those? Nothing. The Associated Press, the Associated Press investigated 475 cases of potential voter fraud in six battleground states, and they found basically nothing that could affect the votes, the outcome of that, of those, of that election. Claims about mail-in voting, by the way, mail-in voting is how our veterans vote. You're looking at one who voted that way. That's, that's been that way since I can remember. I believe we've been doing that since you could vote, at least since World War I, when our soldiers were overseas fighting, couldn't come here to vote, so they had to mail in ballots. Right now, they're trying to get rid of those in some states. Thank you, thank you to President Trump again, and his allies, and those who continue to excuse him. Numerous judges, including those appointed by Republican Presidents, have looked into evidence and find no widespread voter fraud. I'm not standing here to say there wasn't, I'm just saying there's not enough to justify what we've been doing here. I believe the Court of Commissioners Court, you did a fine job. You had a, I believe you had a workshop on the issue. You've done your job to try to placate and make everybody happy, say, hey, we're doing something to make sure our elections are going to be safe and fair. You've done your job, that's enough, in my opinion. And let's be clear on another issue, which they don't want to hear, a lot of people don't want to hear. The Trump campaign quietly commissioned at least two firms to investigate election fraud. One of those firms was led by a man by the name of Ken Block. Block's investigation included, concluded that all of Trump's fraud claims were false. His work, Block's work, found no evidence to support allegations of widespread voter fraud or irregularities that could have affected the outcome of the election. And one of his statements was, he emphasized that the facts he uncovered show that the 2020 election accurately reflected the will of the people. He notes that one of the main challenges he had in getting his, the word out is that his message was not being heard by the media, conservative or otherwise, as it contradicts the narrative that many of Trump supporters want to hear. This is not about voter integrity, 100% it's not. It's about excusing future bad behavior should their elected candidate not win. We've seen that. We all saw the news on January 6th, we saw what happened. They won't excuse another event like that happening. I raise my hand, the Army, to defend the Constitution against all enemies, both foreign and domestic. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm still on duty.
Thank you. Judy Leunis.
Phew, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'm Judy Leunis, and Ms. Mize, thank you. I'm also a public school teacher, or was, for 40 years in this community. And I usually watch y'all with three dogs on my lap in my pajamas, but I got dressed this morning and came down. One thing that, that really, really bothers me, and it's, it's as a teacher, is that many people in here don't even know what your job is, to come on here and say mistruths about Fiesta Patrias, which is downtown Bryan, a downtown event that has gone on for decades. We are a multicultural community, whether some people like that or not, we are, and it's becoming more and more multicultural. We should get out of our bubbles, we should learn about other, which teachers do all the time. We learn about kids from other areas. I taught in College Station, I had tons of kids from countries all over the world. It was fantastic. I also was, which I appreciate your apology, I was at the voter registration booth for Texas Democratic Women. It was filled with 70, 80-year-old men and women registering voters. We were right next to the Trump booth, I didn't ever see it said, it may have said Republicans, but it said Trump. And, and the people working there, they came over and constantly talked to us, were very friendly. We were busy registering voters, but they were very friendly, we had great conversations. It, it wasn't like whatever you were told. So please, if, if you're going to come up here, and this is on streaming, say the truth. Also, understand their role. They don't make decisions about what events are in Bryan or in College Station. I, I just greatly appreciate what you all do. You run, I've run for office, I watch what you all do, and the, the stuff that is thrown at you constantly, I think it's great that you can't respond to people, because I'm sure sometimes you just want to go, oh my gosh, my gosh. And then lastly, since almost everybody in here knows I'm in animal rescue and have been forever, I want to thank my sheriff and my constable, Jeff Reeves, because our cats are safe in this community. And I greatly appreciate the education that Jeff's group, because I work with them closely, because that's my precinct, that, that they make sure that the kitties get home, because what, what the threat is to people letting their cats out, which as a rescuer, I think's horrible, because you're setting them up for a loss in your family, is the coyotes. And, and the coyotes are skinny right now. I really live in the county. So the coyotes are skinny, the coyotes are going to eat what they are going to eat. So I'm sorry you all have to deal with the mistruths. I appreciate several of you taking phone calls from me and encouraging me to come and talk to the people, which I'd already decided to do, because we can't have people sitting online just assuming everything that is brought up here is true. Another thing, I serve on the state level of the Democratic Party, I'm the SDC member that represents Congressional District 10, and I know that will bother a lot of y'all, but I'm also, I've also been here since I was 19, and I'm 71 now. And I, I just believe that, that when we get up here, we should speak about what we know. All of us are active and running around or trying to get our streets fixed, and you all, thank you very much, he's the only person I'm afraid of, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, that was the last in public, so citizen input. We will consider and take action on Agenda Items 3 through 25. Number three is approximation of 24/20, proclaiming the week of September 30 through October the 6th, 2024 is a week without driving.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. I would tell you that this is a noble cause to try to, you know, save energy and take other methods. It's not practical in Brazos County or in Texas, really, I mean, but, you know, it's a, it's a noble cause to try to save energy, and so that's why we got it on the agenda. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number four is consider and take possible action on county burn ban. Jason.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Jason Ware, Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator for Brazos County. Wish I had better news, and tell you that we had an abundance of rain over the last seven days, but that is absolutely not the case. Currently, our numbers are at 667 on the high side, correction on the, as an average, as an average, we're at 667. On the high side, it's 721, and minimum is 542. And what I will tell you about those numbers is that the majority of Brazos County is in that 600 to 700 range, with very small areas below 600, and that's on the south part of the county along the Navasota River. Our fire danger forecast picks up tomorrow, there's supposed to be a cool front that, that comes through. With any kind of passing front, the winds typically pick up, and the humidity kind of takes a dive, and that makes fire conditions more, more easy to, to kick off and harder to control. Right now, the U.S. drought monitor is slowly creeping to the east across Brazos County with the abnormally dry weather setting up to the west of Highway 6 at this point. Over the last seven days, we've had a handful of grass fires totaling about 30 acres, a couple of them that, one was 15 acres and the other one was about 14 acres, so we've got an average of about 30 acres or so on a couple of different fires. Spoke with the four fire chiefs yesterday, three of the four are absolutely in concurrent, or they agree that it's time to pass a burn ban, the fourth one will support it if it's passed. We also had, yesterday morning, a citizen from the northeast side of the county contacted, called me on my office phone and, and said that they were in support of a burn ban as well. So it's, in my opinion, that, that we're probably dry enough, we don't see any plentiful rain in the forecast in the near future. In my opinion, it's probably time to pass a, a burn ban. I'll remain here for any questions, if you have any.
Okay.
Hearing that, I would move that we institute a burn ban in Brazos County.
Second. Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries, and that goes into effect probably immediately. So we'll need to notify the public, I don't know if Barbara, I think, is on the line, but we'll need to notify the media to make sure that everybody's aware that that goes into effect. Counselor?
Judges, so you know, we've reviewed the burn ban this past week, the order that we used, contacted the Texas Forest Service, some other counties that are our side, and Jason kindly took a look at it just to make sure that we are current with our burn ban order, and we are.
Okay. Jason, thank you, and if you could please pass our thanks on to the fire chiefs as well for their input.
Yeah, absolutely.
Did we vote on that?
We voted.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to number five, approval of various Brazos County comp time policy to allow elections administration staff to be paid overtime for the November 5th, 2024 election cycle.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. Y'all have a lot of work, you've been working for, you know, it seemed like election after election after election, so thank you for all you do.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough hours in the day to give them the comp time that they've already got coming, to do it by the end of the year. So thank you for, for you and your staff and the excellent job you do. It's appreciated.
And I fully support you 100%, been there, so I know what you go through.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is approval requested for proposed Roden Bridge Department 2025 holiday schedule, which is equivalent to the standard approved 96-hour 2025 holiday schedule.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is Order 24-1015, adopting tax rate of 4 cents, or 4% of the local provider participation fund for fiscal year 2025. I guess that is 4 cents, it's not, shouldn't be the percent. Approving payment administration cost of Brazos County and designating Truist Bank as LPPF depository.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Okay.
And it's 4%, so HHSC gives us an amount, and it's 4% of that certain amount, which is part of the backup, and it's not a tax rate based on Brazos County, it's a rate for the hospitals. We get recommendations from HHSC, they're the ones that tell us what percent it needs to be at, and we just have to adopt it for the hospitals. But it's 4%, not 4 cents, just 4% of the net patient revenue.
Okay.
Okay.
So it costs, the, the
Doesn't cost the county.
Property tax is, is not increasing that, has nothing to do with property taxes?
Has nothing to do, correct. And if you look under the adopted budget, under special revenues, there's a local, local provider partnership fund, and that's where the revenues come into play. And so it starts on page 60, I believe, and it's located in the 25 budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dee. Number eight's approval of
No, no, we haven't voted.
We had voted on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight's approval of following job descriptions.
Move approval A through B, Z, and double A, double B.
I need a second. Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval requested from purchasing department to declare a list of surplus property as salvage in accordance with Local Government Code 263.152 to unauthorized destruction or means of disposal.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval requested revised capital asset policy. The asset policy has been revised to include information regarding Gatsby 87 leases and Gatsby 96 subscription-based information technology arrangement.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is approve requested, approval of requested transfer payment agreement with Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Agreement.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is approval requested from workers compensation renewal with Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Agreement.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval requested from an MOU, of an MOU between United States Attorney's Office for the District of Columbia, for the Metropolitan Police Department of Washington, D.C., MPD, and Brazos County Sheriff's Offices, will allow members of Brazos County law enforcement agencies to participate in the inaugural activities of the President of the United States.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. And so this one is reimbursement, the county pays, or yes, the county pays for it upfront, but we're reimbursed by the Washington, D.C. Metropolitan Police Department, so it's reimbursement. That's correct, Sheriff, that's, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is approval of the community support contracts for FY 2025.
Move approval A through F.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval requested purchasing department to advertise for auction for surplus property.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is approval of contract 25-021 for copier maintenance with Dayhill Office Technology Carp, DBA, Xerox Business Solutions, Southwest.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is approval of the following committee, RFP, CIP, 25-527, Roden Bridge Office Building Renovations.
Move approval A through F.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is permission to advertise CIP 25-527, Roden Bridge Office Building Renovations.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is consider and take action on the City of Bryan utility permit to construct road board for an 8-inch sewer line across Gunner Road. Project will provide sewer service to area residents sites located precinct two. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 20 is tax refund application for the following
Move approval A through J.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 21 is budget amendments, budget amendments 23, 24, 49.01 through 49.13.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion.
We have any idea as to when this information will be available for the public to view?
I don't know because Novus, that's a, it's, as Counselor said, Novus is out of commission, I think, wherever, you know, wherever they're at, with that version we've got. I don't know whether that, these backups can be posted on, at the webpage like our agenda is. I mean, those are questions I don't, I don't know.
If it would be possible for us to, I know we get a copy of the backup with the agenda. Would it be possible in light of the circumstances to be able to, because if Novus is down, then it's not going to show up in the minutes because the minutes are also Novus, correct?
Correct.
Would it be possible for us to put that out there due to the, you know, circumstances that we have so people could be able to look at these items? It's a large number of items.
And that may be possible, and certainly if it is, we'll try to make it happen. I'm just, I'm not the guy to answer whether it's possible or not. I don't, I don't know.
That's why...
I could run through them right quick.
That's why I asked all the questions.
Well, so I'll try to answer one. So, the, let me run through those, and I'll tell you what they are. $620 is reallocation of funds to correct the account to cover fuel expense through September 31.
I have, I could provide backup after this meeting for the ones who would like to have the budget amendments. That way, you don't have to read all 13 of them. And then, if they have questions, they can visit, or we can discuss it next Tuesday as well. Would that be okay?
I think that'd be great.
Okay, I could do that.
Thank you.
Just strange circumstances that this is not available and...
Oh, no, totally understand. Thank you.
Beyond our control.
Thank you, Nina.
Okay, so then we will, we've got a motion as second to approve the budget amendments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 22 is personnel change status.
Move approval A and B.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 23 is payment of claims. Claims being paid by Brazos County is 8205201 through 8205329 and 9202321 through 9202385.
Question. Thank you.
We did a motion as second.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. So, we will move down and to number 26 is acknowledgement of the 23, 24 budget acts by funds as of September the 18th and then acknowledgement of the 23, 24 contingency budget act by fund as of September the 18th, 2024. 27 is acknowledgement of month report submitted in September of 2024. 28 is juvenile director's report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 32 in detention, 25 males, 7 females, and 28 on electronic monitor.
Thank you, Linda. Sure.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. 793 today, 600... That's right. I like that. 672 men, 121 women, and 43 on monitors.
Okay.
What we hope is it's the beginning of that seasonal decline that we'd normally see this time of year. We hope that that sticks.
Yeah.
So, that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Good to see it under 800.
Number 30 is announcement of interest of possible future agenda topics and beginning Sep, October the 1, Brazos County Commissioners with a live stream will move from Facebook to YouTube. Live streams will, are all archived meetings and are accessible from YouTube channel, and then there's a link to it. So, we will switch from Facebook to YouTube.
Good deal.
October 1st.
I'm glad to hear that because a number of my constituents aren't on Facebook, and that's one of the, you know, they want to be, you know, participate as well, when they can because they can't always come to the meetings and the fact that it's now on a platform that is much more accessible. So, I'm glad we're doing that. So, whoever made that happen, thank you so very much.
Yeah, I agree. The strange thing is, is even though our Facebook site is accessible without being, having to join Facebook, a lot of people don't, don't really get that. So, I think this is a great alternative. Thank you.
Okay, so we will move back up and...
I wanted to say that our Brazos Valley Fair and Rodeo is October 18th to the 20th, and tickets are now available, so...
Yeah.
You're making her announcement.
For us.
No, no problem.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Jaclyn Foster, General Manager of Brazos County Expo and Brazos Valley Fair and Rodeo, and I have Avery Fisher with me. She's the manager of Brazos Valley Fair and Rodeo. And of course, we're here to talk about the Brazos Valley Fair and Rodeo. We are super excited. It is just around the corner, just a couple of weeks is when the fair is, and we want to just kind of give everybody a little update and some details. Not only is it a special event for us, it's one for the community, and we just hope to see everybody come out and enjoy. So, I'll let Avery give y'all some details. So...
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Yes, so this year is our 13th fair. We're really excited. We have a good lineup this year. Friday, the 18th, Bart Crow Band will play. 19th Lone Star, some classic country, so that'll be good. Sunday, the 20th, will be Grupo Secreto. We're really excited this year, and we, we're going to have Sea Lions again, so I don't know if anybody's come out and seen those, but it's probably the only time you'll see Sea Lions in Brazos County. So, come check them out. Pig races, we have...
Should we bring fish?
Yes, they love fish. Yeah. They'll shake your hand and do all kind of cool things. So, we have mutton bustin', then the full rodeo carnival, safest carnival in town. So, we like to pride ourselves on our security, thanks to Jason and his team, and Charles with parking, Charles Went with parking, and Ms. Leslie Concheres helps us with our volunteers. So, if anybody is up to volunteering, reach out to Leslie or myself, and we'll get you involved. We will come back next week to sell tickets to county employees at a discounted rate of $10. So, we'll stick around a little bit if anybody has questions. Thank you, guys, again.
Thank you, Avery.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
And then I have one comment. So, I'd like to give our, I'm going to speak on behalf of the, no, I'm thinking. Speak on behalf of the Commissioners Court that we'd like to give our condolences to Mayor Bobby Gutierrez for the loss of his mother. I think the service will probably be this weekend. I should have written down the date.
Saturday.
But again, our condolences to the Gutierrez family for the loss of their mother. She was a beautiful lady.
Okay, so we will move back up to executive session. Flashback on convening executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to consult with an attorney about pending or contemplated litigation and our settlement offer. And we need Coachurro and Legal and Chief of Staff. And I think that's all we'll probably need in there today, and the time is 10:52.